Good?
Yep.
Okay, then I would like to call the meeting to order and please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first order of business is the approval of the minutes of November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty. And my only comment was for the folks who spoke, I didn't see Rachel Stadleman's name. And she spoke at open comment, I think. So I just want to make sure she's acknowledged.
Well spotted.
I read through it twice, but it could be me. So can I get a motion to approve the minutes adding Rachel Stadleman's name?
So moved.
So I think Suzanne has her hand raised. I'm not sure if that's intentional. Can I bring her in for a second?
Absolutely.
Please do.
Suzanne, did you have your hand raised?
Yeah, I can fix that.
Okay.
Pounding on you.
Okay. All right.
Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes of the eighteenth of November. Julia?
Hi.
Shannon?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
And Kelly, aye. Peter will be joining us shortly. Okay, we have executive session minutes to approve from our, Matt and I were on the DTA negotiations committee. And all of that is obviously private information, but there were notes taken from that. And from some of our other executive session meetings. So it's kind of a big group right now, but we just want to make sure we get those approved. So the DTA ones are January twenty-third of nineteen to twelve of nineteen to twenty-sixth of nineteen, three eleven of nineteen, three twenty-sixth of nineteen, four eleven of nineteen, four twenty-four nineteen, five seven nineteen, and five twenty-three nineteen. We met a lot.
Yeah. And by the way, Kelly, I just, I should say, I take responsibility for sitting on these. They were done, ready to be approved right pre the world shutting down, and then it just got, it got pushed aside. So my apologies for that.
No worries. It's before our next negotiation, so they're
Yeah, I know, right?
And Peter's here, yay. Can I get a motion to approve the DTA negotiation executive session meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor. Julia?
So, sorry to ask a question, but
Yes, sorry.
I've never been asked to approve minutes at a meeting I've not been present at. So how do I do, I mean, does that make any sense?
It's a good question because it's a subcommittee. I'm not, I actually don't know the answer.
I think it's only the people who are present who get to approve.
Have we approved when you were on DTA? Were you on negoti-? No, it was John and Maureen. I don't know if we approved their minutes. That's a really good question.
Peter, do you remember that? Because you were on the last
Last round. Yeah, he was.
That's right.
Yeah, no, I don't think, I don't think you can approve minutes in a meeting you didn't attend.
Yeah, I think so. So I think it's just whoever's there.
Okay, so it's Matt and I.
Minutes.
Okay. All right, Matt, shall we approve the minutes from DTA negotiations since you and I were there?
Why not?
All right. So I'll second. And all in favor, Matt?
Aye.
And Kelly, aye. Okay, so then the April first, July twenty-ninth, and August twenty-sixth. John, can you tell us who was there for those ones?
Yeah, I don't have it up right here.
Well, we, we, we were all there.
Those are all, look, those are all
Public ones.
Those are our meetings, yeah.
Right, right.
I can open it, but they're listed on top of the minutes.
Okay, as long as those were ones that we were all present at. Okay, so can I have a motion to approve August first, two thousand and twenty, July twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty, and August twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor. Julia?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And Kelly, aye. Okay. Well, that's good. We learned something new tonight. Or at least I did. Reports for the school committee, Superintendent Antonucci.
Yeah, just two things. First, just, just another sort of final reminder that we are all attending, if you can, the finance committee meeting tomorrow evening. That's Thursday, December third. The meeting starts at six thirty virtually, and we'll be making a you know, brief presentation, probably condensed version of our full budget presentation. So just, just a reminder, hope to see you tomorrow night. If not, no problem, we'll, we'll represent you. Second thing is sort of random, but I just wanted to kind of say out loud, I want to talk about snow days for a minute. And prompted because I got a call from Patriot Ledger last week, and they were doing a story on what districts were doing for snow days, and I made some comments, and I just wanted to make sure that kind of we're all on the same page and hear, hear if you have any feedback, but I, I'm sort of inclined to, because we're already in a virtual environment, you know, remote, hybrid some days, fully remote other days, to to just have virtual learning days when there's inclement weather. The caveat being unless there's significant power outages in town, right, which would seriously handicap our students' ability to complete their work. And, you know, we have some history here with, you know, we are part of this state's pilot with these alternative virtual learning days or Blizzard bags, you know, was a kind of slang term we used to describe them. So I, I think we're really well primed to just continue with the learning on those days. And, you know, and just so, and, and I, I know that snow days have kind of a you know, nice memories of childhood and sledding and all that, but we also have to make up the day at the end of the year. And so, you know, a learning day, the quality of a learning day in January or February typically is, I'd say, more robust than a learning day in, in mid or late June. So I'm always, I just, full disclosure, I'm always inclined, you know, to kind of preserve the calendar to the extent we can. So I just wanted to kind of say that. I'd be glad to hear other opinions. It might be just kind of a see how we do, you know, depending on how many, how many bad weather days there are, but that's kind of where I was. So Shannon, sorry about that. You had your hand.
No, sorry. A little too eager. So does that mean it would be like a Wednesday?
Yeah, basically, yeah. Full, 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 full virtual learning days for everything. Again, just, just like our Blizzard Day pilot, although I think quite frankly, a lot more robust than that, just because now we're the kids are fully engaged in, you know, academic content on those ones.
You're not expecting faculty to come into school?
No.
Okay.
No, no. That's a good question, though. Yeah.
They would load from preloaded lesson plan?
Excuse me?
They would have a preloaded lesson plan or load from home?
Yeah, yeah. I, I think we'll have to kind of work up the details of, of what the virtual day looks like, but it's possible that we just, you know, that they're just teaching from home, you know, and we kind of have that model on a few spots right now that, that seems to work.
Well, the Blizzard bags were virtual, weren't they?
Sorry, Julia?
The Blizzard bags were, were online. They were accessible online, weren't they? That kind of
Yeah. Yeah. I'd expect this to be a little more content. You know, much, you know, again, we're trying to replicate the, the best learning day possible. So I don't want to give, I don't want to give away a day. So we'd have to make sure that it's, there's, you know, significant amount of rigor and content covered. So it's, it's, it wouldn't be a throwaway day. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to do that for, for anybody's sake. I don't want to get, whereas, you know, we only have a hundred and seventy days a year as it is, so they're precious.
If we had enough notice that a storm was coming, it would give the teachers plan, time to plan for just a continuation of what they would have been working on in class that week. It might be harder to do a virtual day last minute if it surprised, we had a surprise storm, the news wasn't warning everyone about days in advance. But with a little bit of notice, the teachers could plan a full day based on whatever had been worked on in class versus our old Blizzard bag plans that weren't necessarily tied into what was happening that particular week because they were prepared in advance.
Right, and those for the younger kids, it was read an article or watch a show, write a, watch a movie, write a review. That was more social emotional learning.
Exactly, yeah.
But yeah, I think with, with the hybrid and with the, the feedback we've received about, you know, professional development days being on school days, and the more curriculum we can get out, the better.
And again, we're not, we're not, we're not married to this idea, right? I guess we'll have to just kind of see how it goes, but I, I just did want to kind of talk about what I was thinking out loud, just so I wasn't going down a path that you know, people had different ideas. So we'll see how it goes. And again, we do lose power around here quite a bit, stating the obvious, so that, that's going to be a consideration. All right, so stay tuned.
So that, are you done, John?
Yes, I am.
All right, Danielle?
Yes, I just have a couple of happy announcements. We would like to thank the Ducksbury Rotary. They made an extremely generous donation to the school district of five thousand dollars from their Good Neighbor Fund that will be used to purchase gift cards, which they already purchased for us to be able to donate to families in need this holiday season. So we're going to be working over the next week or so to distribute those gift cards to our families that may need some extra support this year. I also have a happy announcement that we just found out this afternoon that the Ducksbury Education Foundation approved a pretty substantial grant for a Ultimaker S-five Pro Bundle Professional 3D printer with accessories for our Ducksbury High School Robotics Program as well as our Computer Science and Engineering courses at Ducksbury Middle School and High School. So that's great news for our programs. And I also wanted to mention that Ducksbury Education Foundation is in the middle of their fundraiser right now, which this year is Dunk for DEF. That's going to continue to support innovative programs in our schools. And you may have noticed that we've had quite a few staff members already do their plunge for DEF and record themselves going in ice cold water. So we have lots of Chandler and Alden staff and administrators, but so far I haven't seen any secondary. So Ms. Ventura, Mr. Henninger, Ms. Smith, Mrs. Magner from Chandler, Mr. E., Ms. Friar, Mr. Backland, Ms. Jones, Mr. Sheptak, Mr. Goslin, and Ms. Martin, and Mrs. Nisi from Alden School have all dunked themselves in ice cold water for DEF plunge. So if you can check out their website, they have information about their Dunk for DEF, which I think continues throughout the month. So great job, every, every brave soul that's already gone into the water this year. And that's it for me.
That's great. I did catch on social media Christine Solvik and Missy Magner. They stood on the Bluefish River Bridge.
Yeah.
Christine did a backflip into the water, and then Missy went right in after her, and I thought, wow, that's some brave folk right there.
And I think Missy might have even had a dragon costume on while she did it.
I think you're a hundred percent correct.
Pretty impressive.
I love it. That's great. And we thank the DEF because without them, we wouldn't be in the good shape that we're in.
Definitely.
All right, Katie Blake, you're up.
Hey, everyone. So I just have one update for tonight. And as we had mentioned in the fiscal year twenty-two budget presentation, we're currently in the last year of our contract with our yellow bus transportation provider. And so I am in the initial stages of rolling out the school bus transportation bid schedule. And with the bid release date currently set as December ninth, so that's next Wednesday. And the bid opening date, so the date when we're able to open all of the proposals is set for January sixth. And I hope to be able to present the recommended bid award to you all at the school committee meeting on January thirteenth. And so I just wanted to make you all aware of that process before the recommendation at that meeting.
Thanks, Katie. Um, I don't have anything for tonight. I'll talk later on about our goals. So our first discussion item is our update on the hybrid special ed from Heather Tucker during the hybrid.
And we're going to bring, Danielle, are you doing that? Or do you want me to do it? We're going to bring in, we have some panelists that we're going to ask to join right now. Danielle, just take a minute to bring them in. You want me to help with that, Danielle? You're on mute.
Yep, I can promote people to panelists. It just takes a second.
And Heather, you might introduce some folks or have them introduce themselves. You're muted, too.
It's like the favorite game during team meeting. Oop, you're muted. Okay.
Erica.
Hi.
Lori?
Hi.
Okay, let's see here. Did I get everybody, Heather?
Uh, it looks like we have everybody here.
Yep.
Um, so I have a group of special educators here, so I will introduce who we have, and we have put together a little slide presentation for you around, not just hybrid, but a few also exciting. I thought I'd capitalize on the opportunity to just share some of the exciting things that are happening in special education as well. But first, I have Erica Clark.
Hi.
Is the, in eighth grade special education teacher, but also the DMS building coordinator. I have Lori Aldrich, special education, grade three. Um, I have Marissa Walsh, who is a Chandler special educator and also the Chandler building coordinator. Um, I have Valerie Kelly, who is new as of August with us as the Chandler and Alden team chair, which is exciting. And then I have Melissa Leydlaw, who is the high school team chair, formerly secondary team chair. So that's who we have present with us. And then obviously I'm Heather Tucker, Director of Special Education here. So what I am going to do is I share my screen in a presentation mode and, let me do let me do screen share. This one here. And present. Is everybody able to see?
Yes, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so our, a little bit of an update here. Um, we, as, in October two thousand and eighteen, when I arrived, we created a dyslexia screening committee in response to our, the legislation that was released about early screening and, and supporting students who are potentially thought to have dyslexia or have dyslexia. And within that, we also added to the strategic plan for the district that we wanted to get our special education teachers to be trained. I turn it over to Lori Aldrich, who is currently in the first cohort of our Orton Gillingham training. So take it away, Lori.
Thank you. Um, yeah. So back in, about a year ago in December, ten teachers in the district embarked on our Orton Gillingham certification by attending a forty-hour training session. It put on by the Institute for Multisensory Learning, and we were, we were trained in the Orton Gillingham approach. So we had our training course, and then the next step was to, is to conduct our practicum. Now, little did we know that in September of two thousand and twenty, we would be conducting our practicum in the midst of a pandemic in a hybrid, which we had never heard of type model for student attendance. And so that just kind of sets the stage for how, it's, it's a little more complicated than we had anticipated. So the responsibilities of the practicum include every single week we have to write, plan, and teach a two-hour lesson with a student that we have, that we have chosen, a special ed student from our caseload. And we have to submit a nine-page lesson plan with detailed reflections, very detailed reflections, almost conversational reflections. We have to record and submit videos. We have to submit reading assignments, and then we have to apply the feedback that we've been given by our supervisors from the previous lesson week. So it is a tremendous amount of work, but a, an enormous opportunity. I mean, huge. So some of the opportunities afforded to the school is that we now will have inclusion teachers that have reading specialist certification, which gives us an incredible insight. If you're a special ed teacher and you are actually doing the reading specialist teaching with your student, it gives you incredible insight to their needs, and you can apply strategies all day long across curriculum. It's just far more effective, I think, than us consulting with a reading specialist, a special ed teacher, than having to kind of apply what they've heard from the reading specialist. This is incredible. I mean, I'm already experiencing how great that is to be able to see that in your students. Also, the strategies that we learned, we were able to apply right away when we came back from the training session. So we were using it up until the closing of the school. We were using our strategies that we had learned. Unfortunately, we were kind of cut short in March, and the institute hadn't yet even established any online or remote learning kinds of software for us, so we kind of had to put it on hold. But since then, they actually have been putting out a lot of remote learning types of interactive software for us to use, which is great. So another great thing about it is that we can apply these strategies to all students, not just our special ed caseload. We can use whatever we've learned with all the students that we work with. Some of the obstacles that we're running into is that the students are only here for two hours a day, I mean, two days a week, sorry. And we need them for two hours during that week to train them. So that is, we have to kind of beg, borrow, and steal from areas to get them for the two hours. But of course, the students that we've chosen for the practicum are very needy, and most of them have dyslexia. So this is actually an incredible opportunity for them. They're getting, you know, a huge dose of reading instruction, which is just what they need. And, and we're managing to meet with them a little bit remotely during the week when they're not here. So we're eking out time and we're making it work. Also, they kind of cut back on the, on the length of the practicum. It was supposed to be fifty out, fifty weeks, and they cut it back to twenty-six weeks, which kind of really crunched us even more. But, you know, we're gonna do it. We're trying. We're doing the best we can. And it's extremely time consuming. I mean, I've talked to the other teachers that are doing this, and we estimate we spend probably about eight hours a week extra, you know, over, over and above all the new stuff we're doing anyway. So it's, you know, it's very time consuming, but it is definitely worth it. And I think we're going to have a really well-trained special ed staff that's going to be able to really accomplish a lot more. So it's a lot. It's a lot of work, and we're doing it. And we're happy about it. We're happy that we have the opportunity. It's incredible. So thanks for listening.
Thank you, Lori. I do. I appreciate that. And just as part of the second round of certification, we have nine special education teachers who will be taking their first forty-hour training or their forty-hour training course this December, and will be participating in the practicum next September. So it is a great opportunity, and, you know, we're really thankful that the teachers are doing this. So it is much appreciated by us to you as well, Lori.
Next, can I ask Lori a couple of questions?
Sure.
Or you? So is it Orton Gillingham that, so they're running this, and they cut the practicum down from fifty-two hours to twenty-six? Is that what you said?
It's on S E, the instit- the training program. They're teaching the Orton Gillingham.
Uh-oh.
Um, so what is happening? Is there the, I
Fulfilling the practicum way.
Sorry, Lori, you cut out.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, yes, it's, it's not Orton Gillingham itself. It's the institute we're taking.
Right, okay. And, and they are supplementing with online material? Is that what you said?
They are, yeah. They send us things weekly.
Okay, that's great. And then what, you said you had to kind of steal time from other, is it a set schedule with these kids, or is it just like?
Yeah, it's definitely a such set schedule.
Okay, so everybody, there's an expectation that the kids will be working with you instead of doing X, Y, Z?
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Um, can I ask a quick question, Kelly? Yeah, so, um, is there, after the practicum is over and after you achieve the certification, is there any follow-up that happens to sort of make sure that you're still steeped in the material and that there's reinforcement of the, of material, or is it like done when it's done?
No, they're always updating with new research, so they're always coming up with new strategies and things that they want to share. So there are refresher courses always being offered.
And so like you just have access to those courses to be able to check in?
Yeah, they send us all kinds of updates whenever they make changes or, you know, discover new things.
And have you seen any, I mean, I know you can't get into any sort of real detail, but have you seen any tangible results, like working with, you know, working with the students now? And, and, you know, asserting some of these strategies, have you seen, you know, kind of the needle move in ways that you hadn't seen before?
Yeah, definitely. I mean, we're always doing, you know, progress monitoring and testing on these kids. And we do see growth. Great growth, actually.
And then how, how, one last question, you mentioned that it can, that the strategies can be implemented to, to mainstream students, not just, not just special ed students. How does that, how, how does, how does that work? Are the teacher, and I might have missed this, are so is, is the goal to have all of the teachers eventually go through the program? Um, so that, so that like these strategies can be used with everybody, or is it just a subset?
Yeah, it's really targeted towards dyslexic kids, and so, you know, special ed teachers.
And so do you, so if, I'm sorry to be obtuse, but how can you introduce it to mainstream students if it's just the special ed instructors?
Actually, it's our co-teach model. It's because at each grade level, there are, you know, for Alden, for example, there are four general education classrooms that are considered inclusion, where you have the special education teacher that co-teaches with the general education teacher. So, and obviously, reading instruction is paramount to everything that we're doing. And what we will have throughout everybody who's being trained is we will have some, like clusters of classrooms where if a general education student is having a challenge, you can implement the strategy. You can follow up with, you know, the decoding and the, the strategies tapping it out or whatever may need, just as you're working with the students through that co-teach model.
So you can share chocolate in the inclusion classroom?
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
Yep, yeah. And that also benefits because right now, a lot of students who may need some reading services, who, you know, it's a, it's a multisensory, research-based, structured reading program that focuses a lot on that decoding. So what will, the benefit is if we are students in the inclusion setting, we can implement those strategies through the wordwork that they're doing within the classroom to help reinforce what's happening with the hopes that we potentially have areas where we may reduce students being removed from the classroom. And it'll support faster generalization if everybody's using the same strategies, language, interventions as a targeted whole. If that makes sense.
It does. Thank you. All right.
Um, so next on our on our share here is to talk a little bit, I've, I have some slides. We wanted to just update a little bit on where we are with the status of high-needs students. And just to kind of do a very brief overview of high needs. The Department of Ed came out with guidance on four districts on how to prioritize supporting students with IEPs. So I won't go through this as intensely as I did at the last school committee, eh? But the DESI guidance, which is here, with Ducksbury being that real full inclusion model, we don't have a lot of students that would fall into the depart- we don't have a lot of students that would fall into the department's guidance for high-needs. For example, one of the areas that they look at is for a student in their educational day to be receiving seventy-five percent of their service delivery outside of the inclusion environment. We have very few students who fall into that. Even, you know, it's where our model is. Other models of instructing students in different districts, what we call around that substantially separate population, have students who are receiving, you know, the vast majority of their students outside of the special education, the general education setting. So what we did is, when I ran different data reports through Aspen, we tried to expand the Duxbury criterion to be greater than that of what the Department of Ed suggested because we wanted to catch more students here in Duxbury. So what we did was we looked at students who were deaf or hard of hearing because we had a lot of feedback from parents and families and teachers that through the Zoom, it was really hard for students to participate. We looked at students who had visual impairments, aided communication. So that's using sometimes picture exchange system, Boardmaker pictures to communicate back and forth or using a device such as an iPad with specialized program, that Boardmaker picture exchange program on the device to communicate. What are traditionally thought of as substantially separate programs in other districts? We, given that we have such that full inclusion model, which is such a strength of Duxbury, we still have students whose skillset require more specially designed instruction targeted through what we call our specialized learning communities. We have a transition, a partnership and a language base. So we looked at that and we also wanted to look at students who had academic needs, both inside and outside of the general education setting, more than just a learning center. It's very common for students in the secondary level to have support through the learning center. And we looked at students who are eligible for extended school year services because we already knew these students were already vulnerable and at risk of regression. Never mind the impact of the pandemic. So I'm going to turn it over to Melissa Leidler to talk a little bit more about our high-needs.
Heather, before you do, can you go back one?
Sure.
Because I don't understand a student receiving specially, the specialized learning community, just like super briefly.
Okay, so we have students who may have an autism or an intellectual impairment that really require their curriculum either spiraled down into entry points of curriculum or really require, we do a lot of like applied behavioral analysis, ABA type of instruction, which is really systematic and designed in such a way that we facilitate students to build their skill base. Partnership is really a program that we look at students who need to integrate more social emotional needs. Sometimes these are higher functioning autism students. Sometimes they're, you know, students with ADHD. Some students who have some emotional disabilities but are really looking and needing those positive behavioral supports interwoven into just the fabric of their day. And our language-based program is designed for students who have specific learning disabilities in reading and writing that are intensive communication, where that, that language processing impacts their access to the curriculum. Does that, okay. Okay, Melissa, I'm gonna let you take it.
Sure. So this slide actually just shows the breakdown of these numbers. And I do want to preface this with, this is the most live data that we could have. I actually just pulled this from the Aspen database this morning. So this does represent the most updated numbers that we have. So if you look at the graph on the left, this actually shows the percentage of special education students in each school. So again, just looking at all of the different schools, including some out of district students as well in that blue area. And on the right, it breaks it down a little bit further into those students that are receiving the high-needs services right now. So of those students at Alden, of those hundred and two students at Alden, thirty percent have been determined to be in the high-needs category. In Chandler, of those eighty-two students, twenty-three percent of those students are receiving four full days of in-person learning. At the middle school, and their total is eighty-four, I believe. So that total of high-needs students is thirty-three percent. And here at the high school with a hundred and twenty students in special education, the high-needs population is at twenty-six percent. So that's just a breakdown of, you know, all of the students that are receiving that high-needs determination. And again, that for full days of in-person learning. And this data doesn't actually include students who aren't in special education but still may have that determination, like students that are currently in the student support team process, ELL students or other students identified as having high-risk factors that would qualify them for four days of in-person learning.
Ms. Leidler, as team chair, I will have, you know, how, have we had any movement, I guess, with high-needs students? I think that would be.
Sure, sure. So we definitely have. So earlier in the year at a reevaluation, we had a student who was in a specialized learning community who was determined to no longer be eligible and to no longer require services. And because she was in a specialized learning community, she automatically had that high-needs designation. So she did move out of that, just again, because she's not receiving special education services. And also, we've looked at some students who, you know, just given kind of those skill gaps and the data collection that we've done as part of COVID compensatory, which I know we'll get to a little bit later, you know, identifying those students that really needed to be in that high-needs designation. So we definitely have had some additions as well as some subtractions from the high-needs. So there's definitely movement. It seems to be fluid and I imagine it would continue to be fluid.
Wouldn't there's movement like that, Melissa, like out of it? Is that, are the parents involved or is that a school decision?
Yep, so it's in a team meeting. So parents are always involved in the process.
Okay, thank you.
We wouldn't make that decision outside of the team process.
Are there any other questions? Just, I know when we first looked at doing this, we were hoping to get approximately, you know, a quarter of the students as high-needs. And I think looking at our, you know, numbers and just calling that kind of an average, I think we've really done what we set out to do. Still trying to be mindful of, of course, we want all students to be back in. Of course, I, as the director of special education, want every student on an IEP to be back into the district, back into the district, four days in person. And it's been really a challenge, honestly, to, you know, the person in me and the educator in me, trying to find that line to say, we still are trying to maintain cohort size. You know, we're doing this because of a pandemic. We're in a hybrid for a reason. Trying to continue to walk that high-needs line. So I feel like we're doing a really good job with that, looking at the students that we're keeping, you know, that we are bringing into the district for that high-needs designation. And I think, to me, this is also really great because our catchment of students is greater than that of what DESI, you know, kind of had within their guidance. So I really feel like we're meeting quite, quite a large population of needs, which, you know, does help me to sleep at night when we're having to make these kinds of decisions.
So Heather, if I could interrupt you, what are the capacity constraints on having more special education students in?
Again, it's that the same things that are, that we're trying to look at as a district in terms of social distance within the classroom. How many desks are you fitting? How many students can you fit into a space and still maintain that appropriate distance? So, you know, the more students we add, we add, just the bigger class size. And the thing is, it impacts both cohorts A and B. When we have a student who is high-needs and here four days, they count as a student on the A roster as well as the B roster. So that's just something important to, for us to consider and remember as we're making, you know, the designations.
Just let me jump in for a second. When you do the math on it, I'm just doing some quick kind of back of the envelope math. You know, we're looking at probably another two hundred and eighty or so kids who aren't designated high-needs but have an IEP. So it's not insurmountable, but just to add this point, that's not, it's not, it's not a small number. We're actually going to be meeting, I think, tomorrow to talk about sort of hybrid 2.0. And this is one of our topics, actually, you know, can we get more kids back and what would that look like? So I'm just sorry, just wanted to jump in on that.
Thank you. So next, I wanted to talk a little bit about what those hybrid days are. And so I have Marissa from Chandler to talk a little bit about what's going on at the elementary schools.
Thanks. I'm gonna try to give a quick update just about how we're providing those special education services during those remote days and in-person days. So at the elementary level at Chandler and Alden, we're working really hard to make sure that we're meeting all those service delivery minutes on those in-person days that the students are here. So we were able to take the minutes that are represented in an IEP and spread them out over either the two days or the four days that students are with us. The benefit to that is that it kind of increases the time they're spending with special education staff while they are here in person. We tried really hard at the beginning of the year to kind of communicate this to families through our distant learning plans because it is a bit of a change in just what the schedule looks like. So we sent those out at the beginning of the years for each student. So the families would know what their services are going to look like in this hybrid model. I know last school committee meeting, the teachers really emphasized the benefits of the smaller class sizes, but I just kind of wanted to target that again because I think the smaller class sizes has really been beneficial for some of our special education students. We are seeing these students take more academic risks while they're in the classrooms. They're making more meaningful social connections with their peers. The students that really struggle with the sensory and the noise level are better able to regulate in the classrooms. We're finding they're, you know, able to pay attention to their academics more, focus in on their learning and the whole group. And really, students are coming in happy and really motivated to be here. I know it stinks to have them not here for two or three days, but they're coming in so motivated and it's really showing in the quality of work that they're giving to us when they are here. And they're forming some really great working habits when they're here in school. But of course, with all those opportunities and all those great things comes some challenges. You know, scheduling is something that is an obstacle for special education every year, but particularly this year. You know, at the Chandler level, we have two recesses. We have two specials some days. We have service providers, multiple service providers trying to schedule times with students. And some students are only here two days a week. So it can be really challenging, you know, optimizing their time in the classroom, but making sure that they're provided all those much-needed services as well. We worked really hard and we, you know, were very creative this year, but we were able to kind of manage all those obstacles. Something else that we kind of noticed this year is it took a lot longer for students to learn their routines. Partly, this is because they're only here two days a week and it is going to take longer. That's to be expected, but it's also partly because we have more routines in place. We have more safety protocols they're needing to follow and just general routines to keep everybody safe. So it's taking, it was taking a little bit longer for them to learn those. In terms of our remote days, we're using those days really to generalize skills and to review skills that we've already taught in person. We're noticing that the students are really navigating our remote learning tools well. They're becoming more independent with their technology. We've focused a lot on teaching them these skills at the beginning of the year and it's really showing just in their ability to navigate on their remote days. Part of our job as a special education staff is that we need to make sure the students are accessing the curriculum on their remote days. This can look very different for any different student. It might be just modifying class work. It might be modifying the grade level work. Sometimes we create completely separate learning grids for students. Sometimes we're adding activities or reducing activities. We're adding to the seesaw or Google Classroom just to target those IEP goals for students. You know, and on top of all that, we're trying to manage the in-person learning as well, making sure that we're providing the lessons, collaborating with classroom teachers to provide support for the general education classroom. We're testing, we're writing reports and IEPs and all that kind of stuff that normally falls, you know, in our year, in our typical job. But just that added extra responsibilities this year has made those Wednesdays really needed and really valuable to the special education staff. We use those times to collaborate with our teams. We use that time to work on, you know, our OG practicum paperwork as well as just our daily lesson plans, as well as evaluation sometimes. And, you know, those Wednesdays have been so helpful to us in just managing all that extra responsibility that this crazy year brings, for sure. And one obstacle I know is not just an elementary obstacle, I think it's a district-wide struggle, is evaluations. Because unfortunately, our timelines are not changing, but we have fewer in-person days with our students. And that has just been a struggle to manage, making sure that we're getting those completed in time. I know at the elementary level, parents have been asking occasionally for us to do those evaluations during students' remote days so that we're not taking away from their learning, in-person learning, which we completely understand and we accommodate as often as we can. As I mentioned before, scheduling in special education is really difficult. So we definitely do the best that we can because we want to optimize those in-person days as well. And lastly, I just kind of want to noted that we understand how difficult this is for families and for teachers. And, you know, one obstacle I think that the special education staff has really run into is just finding ways to support families at home while also providing that individual attention that our students really need while we're in person. We understand that asking students with needs and students without needs to work independently at home is is really a big challenge for parents and we completely understand that. And, you know, we're here to work as a team and we really want to support families as best that we can. And we really thank them for kind of all their support that they're offering to us. So, thank you.
Thanks, Marissa. So is the classroom special ed teacher the same person who's available to the remote students? There's not a separate, so if a child is remote working from home and has questions or issues, how do they tap into their?
Yeah, it's the same teacher. So some of our special education, so each remote student is assigned to a classroom. So the special education teacher that is assigned to that classroom is their special education teacher. So, you know, our, our special education teachers, you know, are answering emails throughout the day when they can. They do meet with students on Zooms, especially our cohort C students, you know, and they try to Zoom at other times with other students that might just be on a remote day as a check-in. We do family check-ins as well, just to touch base with parents if they have questions. But yeah, the teacher that is teaching in person is that same special education teacher that students for cohort C look to.
Okay, so for particular per, is if my child doesn't understand something in math or whatever and someone's not available, do they just table that until they have time to speak to someone?
I mean, they can. They can certainly reach out on Wednesdays. We have office hours. So if it's a Wednesday, you know, there's, they'll definitely, teachers are more available to answer questions and pop on and help students as needed. During our in-person days, it is harder for teachers to kind of just pop on and off. But, you know, we are always checking our emails throughout the day. So parents will definitely, they do email teachers throughout the day and say, I'm having trouble with this. I have a question. What can I do? And we, you know, always do our best to respond as soon as we possibly can. But I know families are really good about kind of just letting us know like, this was hard. We couldn't do it today. And we completely understand. We'll address it with the student later.
Excellent. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Marissa. Next, I have Erica Clark to discuss just the secondary and, you know, just some of the challenges and opportunities.
Sure. So I want to kind of start where, where you just left off and talk about Wednesdays as that big opportunity. I feel like this is the, you know, the silver lining that we've been waiting for. So we've been building these relationships with our teachers and our teams for years and years. And now we're leaning in and we're taking those Wednesdays. And we're integral parts of the team. We're planning the curriculum with them. So along the way, we're making the accommodations and making the modifications and we're able to push- And we're able to push that out in real time. At the same time, we're able to. You know. Co teach, co host on the Zoom. If there's a question, we go into a breakout room, we address it right there. As does the regular education, education teacher. But we're, we're really kind of. It's exciting to use these relationships in this, in this way and to be able to walk the walk and. And make it happen for inclusion. And that kind of brings us to skipping around a little here, but in our current model of instruction. We're able to model this for students and they see us working together and see us problem solving together. And that helps them to problem solve for themselves and see that model in action. Also, we look back to the Wednesdays, students are able to work and generalize these executive functioning skills that are taught. And use those self advocacy skills to promote some more independence. We are often checking in with them at the beginning of a Wednesday in our special education classes. And setting forth and making a schedule with them and then asking them to check back with us at the end of the day during office hours, whether it's with. Us or a regular ed teacher. So we're able to really look and see how are they using those skills that we might have on an IEP or. A goal that we may have set for a student. Students, many of the students. Thrive on a Wednesday schedule. This was kind of a surprise. I'm not saying that all of them do, but many of them actually. Like this way of learning. And don't want to be in for, you know, all the days, but they do want another way of connecting. And so that may mean that we. Zoom extra on those days or find another way to connect. And like I said, students really just appreciate that Wednesday. Teachers and students appreciate that Wednesday schedule to collaborate in a new, in different way. And then that kind of leads us into Wednesdays. There's just not enough time. I'm sure as everybody said. We're having meetings and office hours, grade level meetings, student check ins, developing those lessons. So that, that wish for more time is probably always there. And so like I said, in that, in our current model from in day to day instruction. We are able to model these expectations for students in person. And show what it's like to work as part of a team, building that resilience. You know, the struggle is part of the learning. I know they said that in another presentation at school committee, the teachers. But it really is and, and it's good for the teacher, students to see the teachers working together, working through Zoom. How are we making these solutions? And. Another really big plus that we want to point out, although it's a regular education service, is that academic support block that occurs daily. For students in the middle school and in the high school, and that's just another opportunity for students to work on work, check in with their teachers. Special education teachers, regular education teachers and work through things. And of course, I just want to echo some of the same obstacles. It's really. There's not enough time to teach everything. Getting the students to be engaged in remote learning has been a challenge, but also has led us to some of our, you know, opportunities like I mentioned before. And the biggest thing that we're seeing is we are get, a challenge is to get. To be able to hear the student's own voice. It's a struggle for all students now with this pandemic. It's a different world, but to be able to develop their own voice, their own. Needs, wants. And to be able to hear what they're thinking about their learning is a little bit of a challenge. And then also. The smaller group size has made it easier for us to, to see. If a student is struggling or even if a student is really thriving at something that they can pass on to someone else. But a challenge there is, is finding the time. To, to do those interventions in a way that's going to be meaningful and sustainable in this kind of environment.
Thank you, Erica. Are there any questions? Okay, excellent. So our next piece is to talk a little bit about the COVID compensatory service. The Department of Ed issued guidance on COVID compensatory service prior to the school year, but I'm going to have Valerie Kelly, the elementary team chair, talk a little bit more about this.
Hey, everyone. Thank you for having me. I just want to say. To echo what those two teachers just talked about in terms of what special education teachers are doing to meet the needs of the students. I'm just really impressed by the result that I've observed since I've joined Duxbury of. The teachers and the parents to rise to the occasion. It seems like there are endless demands this year. And teachers and parents are really stretching themselves to grow their students forward despite the challenging circumstances. And so. As we pivot to COVID compensatory services, this is what. What the state refers to as services that a student's IEP team determines are needed to remedy a student's loss of skill or knowledge. Or lack of effective progress that resulted from delayed, interrupted, suspended. Or inaccessible IEP service because of the emergency suspension of in person education as related to the COVID nineteen pandemic. So in essence. Compensatory services are when the district fails to provide a service. COVID compensatory services are when we identify a regression area of an IEP benchmark. Our goal area from March to June of 2020. And. There is an impact of the lack of available in person instruction due to the COVID nineteen abrupt closure. So not a fault of the district, however. We are monitoring it and responsible for growing those students forward. And so we understand that students will have regression and it might be a little bit. More so than a typical year where they had a full, complete year. However, we are monitoring. Progress reports from March to June of last year and we are. Taking these three steps. There's kind of a gradient of what we can do to mitigate the impact of COVID nineteen. So it can span from. A general education support such as a de cap accommodation tiered supports. It can be an actual COVID compensatory service plan. So think of that as kind of a burst or booster shot. It could be a four to six week plan. Of a direct service. For example, if there is a deficit in encoding regression identified from last spring. There could be a one times twenty for six weeks added on top of existing services. And that would be outlined in addition and separate from the IEP. And there'd be a team meeting in which this would be proposed or discussed. And then the last would be kind of the most involved. Part of the spectrum for COVID compensatory service to mitigate that impact. Which would be a new service to address new areas of disability related need, including mental health. That's an important one this year. So we use appropriate processes to determine the new services required in order to amend an IEP, including identifying and obtaining parental consent for assessments. And areas not previously assessed. Later on, we'll get to. The amount of evaluations that our departments have been getting to, but we are as a district, taking it very seriously. And holding a lot of meetings, trying to mitigate that impact. And I'm going to turn it over to Heather.
So in the guidance sent, thank you, Valerie, from the Department of Ed, they. In the guidelines, they identified December fifteenth as. As a date with which they wanted districts to hold the COVID compensatory service meetings. Understanding that, you know, if there are four hundred and fourteen students in the district, we're not able to hold four hundred and fourteen team meetings. Between the start of the school year and now. So what we've done to both. Proactively and some reactively address the COVID compensatory is as we have been doing our team meetings. This, this fall. Not winter yet. We have added this discussion to our. Our team meetings as we're scheduling them. The other thing we, the special education staff, just as what you do as a special educator, is when you get your new group of students. You go through, you read the IEPs, you analyze the goals and benchmarks, you see where the student was performing at the end of the last school year. So you know. What you're looking for and how the student was performing. So as you're developing that relationship and you're starting those. You know, informal and even some of that baseline assessment in September, you're looking at what does that student need? We did this a little bit more structured, just as an internal process. Where we, as a special education department, actually looked at students' IEP goals and benchmarks from. That January time, March and June. One of the somewhat. Great timings, if there's ever a silver lining to when we shut down, it was at the time of progress reports. So we had just had a terms where, you know, a terms worth of. Data collection. So we use that to see how did students do and how did they perform and. You know, how did they access the online or, you know. Services in the spring were tough. It was hard for everybody, students with disabilities, I would say, you know, in particular. But what kind of conversations were the families having with their case managers? What kind of supports were we doing? Were there places where we were. Prioritizing supports and services. But we really looked at that data collection, that progress report analysis and communication with the families. So. That first week in September, all of the case managers were connecting with their families. In a formal, structured way to talk about what kind of communication do you like? How can we build that relationship from the get go? And so. We have looked to prioritize team meetings for students that. May not have bounced back from the return to school that we knew struggled during that springtime. And through that ongoing communication with families. So we. Will have held all of the students. So if you haven't heard anything, think of that as more of good news because. You know, that's through your ongoing communication collaboration. You know, students are progressing and may not require COVID compensatory services, but we definitely prioritize those students who were not. Making progress in alignment with their IEP goals and objectives that was identified, you know, even prior to closure, during closure and upon return. We are using the IEP team meeting process in the guidance. There was, you know, we could identify some COVID compensatory and do that. With communication with family, but we have really used that during. The IEP process and really use that IEP process. Part of that CCS. Plan as Valerie had identified is looking at that regression data, reviewing that as a team, parents as part of that team. What's important to note though is the COVID compensatory service plans are not necessarily a one to one correspondence of misservice. And this is in alignment with what the DESI guidance has provided. And for us, it's not an automatic four days of in person instruction. So we're trying to look at what that student may have missed and what kind of booster shot do they need to kind of close that gap? If we're seeing that there are other challenges, that's where that new IEP service comes into place. But as. We, again, we're doing those service plans that are really individualized. It's not a one size fits all. We don't have like a master. Choice board. It really comes out of that discussion from the team of what do we think this student needs to help them? So that is kind of the overview of COVID compensatory and where we are. In terms of cycling back to where. Obviously, that springtime, we were not able to evaluate. I know I talked about. Evaluations that we did in August to try and stem that tide. One of the things I think to hold on to is, you know, we heard the teachers talk about the challenges with evaluations. Only having students present at certain amounts of time. Not even identifying the fact that, you know. For some time, Alden hasn't had a building sub, so we've only been able to hold IEP team meetings on Monday, Tuesday, Thursdays from two to two thirty in any. Anything that we, you know, so that any. IEP meetings outside of that have required a little bit of calisthetics on behalf of the building principal, assistant principal. You know, the building secretaries trying to gather lunch aids to spend an extra hour before after, so we can squeeze in another meeting. However, the secondary has completed all of the evaluations in outstanding team meetings. I think one of the pieces why that happened was when we moved the team chairs administratively. We didn't have just Melissa Laidlaw doing all of secondary. We have Tristan Yovino, who wasn't able to be here tonight, doing all of the middle school. And then Melissa doing all of the high school and God love Valerie because she's the only she's administrative, but both for Chandler and Alden. So that comes with a little bit of time constraint. I know I've been trying to chair a few meetings as well, but. Really, we only have a handful more where we've completely closed, closed the gap, buttoned up all of last year. And we're also doing this in meeting the current triennial evaluations and then if initial evaluation requests are on time. As well as the annual reviews. So if you kind of think of that in the holistic of. We were backlogged. Not only have we hacked off the backlog, but we've continued to move forward with our current obligations. And still maintain that time, even though our, the time that we've had to do those meetings just isn't the same. One of the things we have been committed to that I just think it's important to note. Is transition planning for students who are moving between buildings, who are matriculating from preschool to kindergarten. Second to third grade. That's a really big transition going from Chandler to Alden. And then going from Alden to middle school, middle school and high school seems to be a little bit more seamless, but I think that's the matching schedule, the same rotation. And that's a lot more lockstep. So we have actually been working hard over the past couple of years. To work on a smoother process for transition and to help teams be better prepared. So I think I just wanted to highlight that this is our. Ongoing. Work that we're doing as a department. And then just lastly, I'm going to, we're going to kind of tag team about parent participation. I know you've heard a lot about. Conversations from the teachers and how the case managers are connecting with families. So Valerie, did you want to talk about our link on our team meeting notes and what we've tried to do?
Sure. So as parents, you know, your child best. And when we have kids in school. Mostly right now, two days in person, it's really important that we get your feedback as to how things are going and what we can do to help support that at home. Another important part is that your voice is heard in the process. And so we have a feedback. Parent survey link that we've been putting embedded in the meeting notes and we, we didn't get the. The volume of participation that we were hoping for. So we started additionally putting that hyperlink in the email directly. When we send the attached PDF, which has the embedded parent feedback link, just to make it easier. But we're reflecting and seeing that we're still not seeing the amount, the volume. And Melissa said this morning, she's had over seventy five meetings so far this year. But we don't have parent survey responses that match that even close and we want to hear from you. So we're reflecting on our practice and we're going to. Think about better ways that we can get your voice involved because you're just as much part of the process and if we're not working closely or getting that. Live feedback, then we're not able to adapt and grow our practice forward the way we need to.
Could I just ask? On going back to the previous slide. In a normal year, what, how many team meetings does a, a student or family have with regard to a. Particular student? What's your expectation?
I think it depends on the family and the situation. There are, you know, some places where students spent in special education for a while, the team. Has really hammered down what the student needs, the interventions are working and we're continuing to just move that forward. That may only need to be just the annual review. There are other. Times where the students are just more complex. The case is more complex. Sometimes there's. Diagnostic clarity that we're seeking, the student we're looking at are the interventions moving a student where we need. There are some. Places where, you know, we've met with a family. A couple of times already this year. And then there's other times where you may, families may only engage in a team meeting. You know, once in a year. So I, I think per family is hard and I think sometimes it ebbs and flows. Sometimes there are places where. The family, you know. It may start off with this initial evaluation, lots of concerns, things we're not quite sure, but once you get that plan. In place humming just the right way, then that may. You may not require as many meetings. You may look at different transition times where families require more. I think it's really individualized. So it's hard to say.
And then triennial evaluations?
That's the three year reevaluation. It's just another way. So every three years, a student is reevaluated. Every year they have what's called an annual. So you propose a goal and you take data on that throughout the academic year. Or throughout the, the year from when that goal is proposed, you have a whole year from that date and you meet. A year from then. And then every three years, we reevaluate to determine that. A student continues to be eligible for special education and if. The current plan we have in place is matching the updated performance data that we, that we glean. that we, that we glean from the updated assessments.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. So Melissa, did you want to talk about the student feedback?
Sure. So what I started doing last year actually is I had a hard copy of that survey and I would bring it to the learning center and kind of go through it with the students. But I realized that there wasn't a lot of anonymity. So if they wanted to say something, they might not have been comfortable. So last year, actually the halfway through last year, I changed it to an online, an online survey. So it's asking those similar questions. Did you feel that your voice was heard at the meeting? Did you feel it to your best interest? Did you feel that, you know, your concerns were addressed? Do you know next steps? And it was actually really helpful for me because that was one of the things that students had consistently said no to. They didn't know what the next steps were going to be. So Val, like you said, it really helped me inform my practice. So that's been really great. I'm finding this year I'm not getting, and again, like you said, I'm not getting as much compliance. So, you know, in sending those out digitally, so I may go back to the paper ones, but find a way to give them a little more confidentiality and anonymity in that process. But Erica, like you were saying too, having student voice in the process is so important and making sure that they know that they're an integral part of the team, I think is really important. And I just want to thank the parents who have been able to respond through that survey or even just reply to the email after we send those notes home. Just, you know, that positive feedback makes a really, really significant difference to the team and the teachers that are working so hard. And, you know, the reason that we're, we're caught up on all of these meetings and that our COVID compensatory numbers are, are fairly low is because of all of the hard work that, you know, the team has put into this and identifying those skill gaps early in the year. So, you know, just thank you for that feedback. It's been really, really helpful.
So going back to feedback, we're actually looking to try and get a form to parents. So it like Valerie said, like we're constantly meeting and reviewing and trying to refine. What can we do in our practices to make it better? What can we do to be responsive to concerns, to questions? What can we always do to be refining our practice? And given some of the just general constraints with the current team meeting, we are hoping to actually start sending a form so parents can pre-fill out and pre-think about what concerns they have for their child, what vision do they have for their child? So that way at the team meeting, we have those and we can kind of put those at the forefront of our discussion. So we're working on how to get that just systematically to parents, you know, through that team invitation process. And the other thing, when we were talking about our, our team survey data, just not being as robust and responsive, we weren't quite sure how to capture or qualify. And I'm a very data-driven person, as my staff will tell you that I like to try and not just have the qualitative, but really the quantitative information. And I wasn't sure how to gather that overwhelming positive feedback that we have been receiving from families. It's been going to individual case managers. It's happening during team meetings. It's happening in emails, in phone calls. And my role doesn't necessarily lend itself to a lot of positive feedback. I usually enter processes and cases when things are a little bit more challenging. And I just have to say that the reach out that I've even gotten from families with, thank you, thank you on behalf of your team, your team did an amazing job. We're just not sure how to quantify that, but I, I want the parents who are listening today to just know how much we appreciate it. And we really appreciate being part of a team, working together, working collaboratively. We are just really, really thankful and, you know, we're really happy to be working together for the benefit of your children. And that's it.
Well, thank you Heather and team. I applaud your dedication. I mean, teaching's a tough field and special educators are extra special folks. So it's a crazy time, but my goodness, are you all doing a wonderful service for our children.
Does anybody else have questions or comments?
I'll comment. I'll just, I just wanted to add, thank you. Being a special ed parent myself, kind of taking off my school committee hat. I just really want to acknowledge everyone's worth that they're doing. And I think when, when parents are willing to reach out and collaborate, the response, at least that I get, is overwhelmingly positive and willing to do whatever they can to support both the child and the family. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would, I would like to add as well, I've, I've never gotten this message. I was turning off my video because I got an error message. You might consider turning off Zoom to cool down your computer. So my computer seemed to be overheating. So if I'm breaking up, you'll only get a part of what I'm going to say. But we spent recently in recent meetings, with a lot of engagement with parents focusing on if we have, and we all agree, we have the opportunity to expand our in-person learning. What are the district's priorities? And recent discussion has tended to focus on Chandler and Alden, like getting the general population of the youngest students in first. But I think it hasn't necessarily always been spoken. There is also an assessment of the students that are high needs beyond the 25 to 30% that are currently in the building in four days per week. So I think it's important for our parents to recognize that our administrators with their, the building principals and the leadership are evaluating what are the priorities for the students that are being most negatively impacted by being at home two days per week? And what are the priorities to get more back? And that certainly includes some that are in the IEP and special ed population, not just K through two and three through five. So I just wanted to make sure people recognize that that's being given very due consideration. And it's, it's, you know, it's a moving, they're moving requirements based on the needs of the students.
Well, thank you Heather. Thank you team.
Great job, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Heather, you're going to stay on, right? I think.
I am.
And everybody else, you're welcome to stay or you're welcome to go.
Go have dinner.
I would choose relax.
Thank you team.
All right. Next up, John, we have policy revision regarding signatures for the warrant.
Yeah, I'm going to turn over to Katie. Katie, you want to talk about this?
Sure. So I, I don't have a PowerPoint presentation for the proposed policy change, but I did provide some supporting documentation that was put in the school committee folder for this week. And so the policy that I have a proposed revision for is policy DGA. And that's just the authorized signature policy. And really just focusing on, as the policy currently stands, there is a line that says prior to submission to the town treasurer, the warrants must be signed by a majority of the school committee. And so during the course of a conversation with the town finance director, we were just talking about the timing of the warrant process. And he brought to my attention that with the municipal modernization act, the Massachusetts general law regarding authorized signatures on the warrants for payments of bills was updated to allow for one signature from the authorized committee. But because we do have the standing, standing policy in place, we do still need to have the majority of the school committee sign the warrant in order for it to be processed by the town treasurer. So the policy revision tonight would just help us, would just give us the ability to expedite, expedite the warrant process and turn payments over quicker. But in order to do so, we would need to review and update the current policy. And I just have a few notes on why this is important. So some of the vendors that we do utilize, so of course with the warrant process, that's what we use to make payments for any of our invoices. Warrants are, occur through the town hall and through the treasurer's office once every two weeks. But some of the vendors that we utilize throughout the district are not flexible with their payment terms or the conditions of those payments. So many vendors have standard payment terms and they also have standard language that may assess late fees on any invoices or any payments that are received past those payment terms. So we're really looking at ways to be able to streamline all of our processes and especially the warrant process and have a quicker turnaround so that we could potentially eliminate any of the fees that we're incurring. And of course, use that funds to better service the students and use them towards what we want to use them for within the district and not on late fees. Deputy, answer any questions about the proposed policy? So in the proposed update, I'm just saying that there, the warrant can be presented to town hall after approval of one committee member.
How quickly can we implement this? Two policy, two readings. Meeting tomorrow night? No.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Oh, can I just add one thing, Peter? Just, I mean, Katie, maybe it was being polite, but I mean, our bill process is simply way too long in this town. In some cases, it's 45 days plus. And then, you know, our inability to sometimes get enough school committee signatures is just part of that. But we're kind of looking at, you know, where can we streamline? And it's sort of part, part of our superintendent's goals, if you remember this year, was to look at streamlining processes, operational procedures, that type of thing. And this is just one of them. But so again, the school committee is just one piece. But if we can shorten it, I think we're going to be better off and avoid late fees. But I, I want to make this point really specifically too, is that there is a big check and balance between us and the town. So we sign the warrant, it still has to go through a full vetting on the municipal side of things. And so I, I just, I just want to say that out loud because there's a really big and very important, in my opinion, check and balance of our work, right? So we're not proposing something that we feel is going to compromise, you know, any of our systems or anything. And it's just a way to kind of tighten things up a little bit. So sorry to jump on you, Katie.
Yeah. So, so my, my comment, and I agree with the need to expedite payment. But I'd recommend that we, we maintain a practice of getting three or a majority of the school committee to sign off, but there be a deadline, like within three days. If we don't have a majority, then one can sign. Because I think the fiscal oversight is good discipline for school committee and it's already been made much easier. We used to have to go into the building in person. We went to an electronic form a couple of years ago, I think now, so you don't physically have to go in the building. I just think it's good discipline in spite of the fact that all of us maybe are tardy in one way or another. I just don't think we should abdicate the responsibility of looking at the warrant every two weeks. And I think it's good practice. So I'm all for, if the warrant gets issued, you have a three-day window and, and the practice should be get a majority of the school committee to sign off. And if we fail to do that on any, you know, any bi-weekly warrant, then go, go right ahead and have any individual sign it, including the superintendent. So, so that, that would be my recommendation. I'm fine with the policy, but I'd like to encourage us to continue with the practice of getting majority of the school committee to sign off.
No, that's a fair point, Peter. Good point.
Great.
So Peter, are you saying the policy would be that it's acceptable with one person, but our practice should still be three sign it?
Yeah, yeah. Cause yeah, and I think again, it's good education for new school committee members to see kind of that, you know, it is one of our core responsibilities is just to be financially providing oversight. So yeah, none of us love to do it, but it's, I think, good thing for us to do. One of us at least is looking, you know, half carefully.
Yeah, Peter, it's a great point, actually. We'd still be sending out the, the electric, the, the message we send out now to all members, you know, and we'll just, we'll give you an hourglass with it, a little reminder. But it'll be helpful to have the policy. But yeah, again, everybody's going to get a shot at it, every warrant still, no question.
And if I can just add to the, just another part of the policy revision, it does state that the members should notify other members of the school committee at the next meeting and immediately following the record of them signing the warrant. So definitely whoever is taking on the responsibility of reviewing and signing off on the payments for that warrant cycle would then have to bring it to the attention of that committee. And absolutely, we would still be sending it out to all of the members. There was some mention of potentially designating one member. And I think it's really great to give everyone the opportunity to, if they did want to go in and review the invoices and the payments that we're making, that everybody should have the ability to do so. So certainly just still giving everyone all of that insight, but just hoping to kind of expedite how quickly we can turn the checks around.
I think that, that will work, but with talented, if you send it out to all of us, we may not necessarily know who's the one person who is the official signer, right? So maybe, maybe you have that information that you can just report as part of your business manager's report that so-and-so was the official signer of the warrant this, this month or whatever. Because I don't think we'll know.
Yeah. And I think as part of the proposal, I don't, I don't know that you'd necessarily want to designate one person. I think just we would be able to send it out to everyone. And then if we do receive one signature that we could just notify you that we've received approval and that, that, that the treasury's office would be able to release the checks. And I can certainly include that as part of my update that the warrant was signed and who was the authorized signatory on it. Absolutely.
Great. Thanks.
Thanks, Katie. So we'll read it again next meeting and then vote on it after, or read it and vote on it?
You could vote next meeting.
Okay. So that'll be the 16th. Alrighty. Okay. So our last discussion item is 2020, 2021 school committee goals. And John and I talked about this and we put it on as a discussion because Duxbury is sort of unique in that we've had school committee goals that we vote, I guess we vote on them every year. We don't really, it's not a charter. It's not necessary. It's just something that sort of has always happened since I've been on. And we go through every year. So I just wanted to put it out there and see what people's thoughts were as far as continuing or discontinuing or whatever other ideas you might want to throw at me.
I, I think it's a helpful exercise. I think it, so I, I would say we continue. I think it's important to kind of stop and take a look at what we're working on, right? Kind of lift our head up and say, what are, what are our goals? What's our philosophy?
Anyone else?
Well, I think there's a kind of a timing issue in that we, our, our goals are kind of informed by the school development goals or the, and the superintendent's goals and things like that. Or can be, not entirely. So we, it is useful, but I think we kind of depend on the input from other parts, well, from the administration really, in order to make sure that we're all marching towards the same endpoint.
Right. Like we've changed it to support the, the strategic plan. Sorry, I had a little brain issue there. You know, and, and when we built the new building and getting it up and running. And yeah, so I think it, it jives with what's going on in the district.
Yeah, dovetails, but we should also have our, you know, we need to kind of also just look at the school committee itself.
Exactly, our own. Well, we have our personal goal where we attend the conference or.
I, I think, you know, I think it is important because I, I think, you know, I think it is important because you know, the circumstances that we are finding ourselves does change periodically. And sometimes in a case like this year, you know, without a lot of advanced planning, we were hit with the pandemic and school closures and everything else. And you know, the current environment is there are a lot of teacher, a lot of parents in the community that are, are participating in the school committee, trying to engage. And as an example, I would say this year in particular, a goal of the school committee should be for each of us to be as receptive and open and available as possible to take input and feedback and communicate with members of the community. That necessarily wouldn't and we'll have three parents attending a school committee meeting. So I think it's a good idea to articulate as a school committee, what we view as being key priorities for the year that we're in. And those situations could be different, like, you know, the school building is an example, or in a year like this year where there's so much, you know, concern about where we are and concern amongst families and, and I think it's a good, a good opportunity for us to revisit our goals and calibrate our goals based on what we find ourselves trying to focus on this year.
If it's, Kelly, if it's helpful, I mean, I can send out the goals from last year.
Yep, let's send them out. And Peter, I know you already gave me some revisions. So if everybody else wants to give me their two cents, that would be great. And we do always have communication on there, Peter. That is our responsibility. So yeah, if we want to change the wording for, for this, for these times, that's completely appropriate.
Yeah, the goals are on the website, so I just cut and pasted them and put them in a word document and just edited them because, you know, I, I think there are some things that are different about this year. So they're, they're out there, John. If you don't want to send them around, everyone can get them.
All right, great. Thank you. So we can, if people want to get something to me, I can we can either discuss it again, or I can sort of put it all together and have Chris put them on the website or I guess if somebody has strong feelings, let me know.
Maybe you could send us all a draft. And we can respond. And then finalize.
All right. So if folks can get them to me sooner rather than later, I know it's getting later in the year.
Give us a deadline.
There was a deadline.
I know, I always miss them. I'm sorry.
Deadline was missed, so we're talking about it. Okay.
ASAP.
ASAP. Get it to me. It was supposed to be by this meeting. So next meeting's the sixteenth. So I'd love to get something to you prior to the sixteenth.
Why don't we say, why don't we say we'll get you feedback by end of day Friday?
Friday's good because I don't like
And then you'll, and then you'll you'll endeavor to just sort of consolidate everything and we can finalize it on the following Friday.
Yes, which would be the Friday before the sixteenth meeting. That would be wonderful.
Okay.
I love to endeavor.
Now that I've said that in public and this is being recorded, I will get this to you by Friday.
Well, and
This is going to mess up talented, so I cannot do the warrant, Katie. Just so you know.
You can't do it because
I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
Your request to have the feedback before this meeting was right before the talented warrant sign off. So I, I actually did both.
I know, you get the gold star this month. He was putting y'all to shame.
That's great, Peter. John, could you mute Peter?
All right, moving along, let's go to public comments. And if folks could, we all know there's an opportunity for people to speak about issues of their choosing without discussing individual members of the school community, school committee. And if you can keep your comments to two minutes, that would be appreciated. So if we can do it by raise of hands, then Dr. Antonucci can call on individuals.
Betsy Gillis. Hi, Betsy.
Hi there. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. I wanted to say that I find it incredibly exciting that, to hear that update about the Orton Gillingham training that's been going on. And so I wanted to thank everybody in this virtual room for their commitment to that. So that means a lot. And I feel like parents all over Duxbury have a lot to celebrate. My, my comment might be a question and it might not be able to be answered tonight. I realize I wrote about this in a recent letter. I do hope that if possible, the school committee and all the people involved in the in the budgeting for next year reconsider laying off, if it's at all possible, a reading specialist at Chandler. And especially if it's a person that we've made a commit a investment in. So if it's somebody who's been through the training, et cetera, that's an investment I'd love to protect. And thank you very much.
Great, thanks, Betsy. Sorry. Okay, Laurel Deacon. Hi Laurel.
Hi. I just want to first thank the teachers that presented for their work to meet the needs of our special education students. And what I can only imagine is a really difficult climate for them, even more so perhaps than for the general population. And then I'm going to read my comment because I want to be certain that I don't miss anything. And then my message is very clear. To say I am disheartened by the misrepresentation of the communication from the DPS students first group by the administration and the school committee in recent weeks is an understatement. I obviously cannot speak to individual communications sent to administrators or the committee. However, the formal communication from this group repeatedly articulated not a demand, but a request for the development of a formal mechanism for parent and community engagement in the process to determine how and when our children safely return to school. It was incredibly disappointing that a group of over three hundred parents in the community who supported this letter were publicly scolded by the school committee for the comments of a few individuals. However, what was more disappointing to me as a parent of what will soon be three children in the Duxbury Public School System was what appeared to be a bizarre attempt in the last school committee meeting to pit teachers against parents. It is unclear why the group's request for a voice in the planning process was misrepresented by the administration in communication to DPS staff as a demand for a full in-person return to school immediately. Even more disturbing was the representation in the same communication that a very active group of parents in town mobilizing to try to force a full in-person return are dismissive of the impact this has on faculty and staff. To suggest that most parents who supported the efforts of the DPS students first group are anything less than incredibly thankful for and supportive of our DPS schools and teachers is disingenuous and particularly disturbing in a climate where it is absolutely imperative that teachers and parents are truly partners if there is to be any chance for a successful academic year for our children. I would ask that DPS administrators and the school committee members review the letter as well as each and every signature of support for what was articulated in that letter. This group of parents who have been repeatedly referred to as bullies by administrators and communication with DPS staff happens to include past and present school council members, past and present PTA presidents, and a large number of families who spend many, many volunteer hours in the schools as well as providing financial and volunteer support for the efforts of the DEF and the PTAs that provide much needed additional resources and support for our schools and teachers, given the repeated budget shortfalls. I respectfully ask that the administration and members of the school committee reflect on and evaluate how effective the engagement and communication strategies used throughout this process have been. If the group of parents I have described above felt that it was necessary to compose and publish a letter requesting acknowledgement and a voice in a planning process that deeply impacts the daily lives of their children and families. Thank you.
Thanks. That's it, Kelly. Oh, there's one more here. Two more. Jenna O'Donnell.
Hi, thank you. I am, I actually just have two quick questions. With regards to high needs, how do our numbers compare locally and statewide?
That's not something I would know. I'm not sure.
Okay, with Heather Tucker perhaps?
I don't know. I don't think that's, I don't think that's really published data.
Okay. And then second, I'm wondering what percentage of parents currently fill out a survey after their IEP?
Let me see if Heather can answer that. Heather, do you have any, any idea?
Sorry, I was just trying to unmute. In previous years, we've had approximately thirty percent of the surveys returned, which is in any sort of data analysis, any survey return that's greater than eleven percent is considered, you know, a statistically significant return. I don't have what percent. But we've had very few this year, which isn't typical, but we used to mail out the survey and I and this year where we are issuing the team meeting notes electronically, we thought it might be easier for parents to try and click through the survey as it was a link on the team meeting notes. And I think what we're finding is we're just not getting that return. It might be easier. So this is part of the refinement and revision of we might go back to paper-based because it might be one more step to click open the email, to open the team meeting notes to then get to the link. So we're trying to embed them in the email. So, you know, we thought, given the fact that the meetings were virtual, it might have been, but I don't have an actual percent. I just know we've had around a thirty percent return before.
Good, thanks, Heather.
You're welcome.
We'd like a hundred. That's our goal. And the final one here, Bree Ling, I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name.
No, you're good. Thank you. So first of all, I just wanted to say thank you as a parent of an IEP student. And I'm actually a cohort C parent, so we are an IEP student at home fully remote. But I have to say, it's, it's going pretty well. And on the snow day, sorry, this is like, you know, way back, but on the snow day part, I don't see why, you know, a parent that was a hybrid parent couldn't just flick over to the cohort C learning grid or whatever for that day and instead have asked us who exactly where all of the kids are. Right, you know, you could print out anything, you could ask all those links. I just wanted to throw that out there because it seems pretty seamless and easy. My kids like purposely finish their work early on nice days so they can go out. So
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Couple more here. Kate Leahy.
Hi, everyone. And I first want to thank our incredible teachers in Duxbury. We are beyond fortunate to have some amazing educators in this town. My question is for you, Mr. Antonucci. You alluded tonight to a hybrid two point oh model. I would love to hear what that hybrid two point oh model entails or when we as parents will receive some details on that hybrid two point oh model.
Yeah, I wouldn't read too much into that. I just, I guess the point is it's always evolving. We are specifically looking at the question we've already alluded to tonight, which is how can we get potentially more high need students in the building, potentially more students with IEPs? So that's something we're actively working on right now. We're also in daily, weekly collaboration with our, with our teachers. Trying to look for a path that we described at last meeting, you know, with a, with a theoretical target of getting kids back you know, after Christmas sometime, maybe it's mid-January. I, I don't think the health data is going in the right direction right now. But we're kind of actively working on that. So don't read too much into that, that terminology. It's just, it's like an evolving, it's an evolving conversation. Hopefully we can have an update to the school committee at the December sixteenth meeting. I don't, I don't expect to have a formal plan necessarily. John Stanton.
Yeah, I was just wondering, I was looking through the curriculum, the social studies at the high school. And it, one sentence caught my eye and I, I didn't understand it, so I thought I'd ask. Juniors are wrapping up their studies of the Gilded Age. This is in social studies and moving toward progressivism. Progressivism. Could somebody explain what that means?
Can I ask you to reach out to the building principal or the curriculum supervisor at Duxbury High School? Because this, this actually isn't a Q and A, it's open comment. So a question like that is not something that we can answer. So I would, I would call Jim Donovan. Or, and he will put you in touch with the social studies department head, Lou Alberti. Or you could email Lou Alberti and ask him directly.
Okay, thank you.
Rachel Stedelman.
Hi, thank you. Hi, I just wanted to comment. I really appreciate the comments of the parent who was speaking about a group. I don't know the group, but I appreciated that, you know, when I was listening to her, I kept thinking at the end of all of this, we just all want the same thing. It's how we are kind of like presenting and communicating with one another and and how we might be perceiving that communication that varies depending on what role we're playing right now. I just wanted to be clear regarding my own comments last week. And especially that I want to be clear that no member of the administration or school committee came to me personally, nor did I hear of any saying that we were being told that parents were bullying us or that part of the comment I, I don't agree to from my point of view and from the teachers that I know. I was speaking really, and I apologize if this wasn't clear, about the platform of social media when discussing really touchy subjects. And this is, this goes beyond what's happening in our little community here. It just is social media in general. And I think sometimes when people open conversations that are delicate up to a place that is known for trolls and fodder. It's just looking for more trouble. And that was really my message and, and what I wanted the community to hear is just I know how people, how hard everyone's working from the inside. I need to be able to speak up on behalf of our administration, our school committee, our teachers and, and also our families and more, more than anything, our students who are just impressing us every day with just their positive attitudes and their willingness to just go with the changes this year. So I want to make that clear and really, I would not say it if it wasn't true. I've never heard that that anyone was giving the message that parents were bullying us. And I wasn't speaking to any particular group when I made my comments. So thanks for letting me speak and I just again want to remind people that at the end of all of this, we want what's best for all of the students in this community. Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel. Mike McGee.
Thank you, John. Can you hear me?
We can, Mike.
I just had a question about this path of going forward. I spoke about it in August. And I know there were some issues with DPH, maybe the Board of Health too. But going forward, is there any thought about this rapid testing that many of the school communities are going to be getting this month? Will that be something in the second phase that Duxbury will be getting?
So is that, is that your only question, Mike?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna put you off. It's a good, it's a good question. The short answer is I don't know. I, I don't really feel a need right now for for testing. So we, you alluded to it. The, the state did roll out a pilot program for in-school testing. We, we chose not to sign up for that pilot. Um, we, we chose not to sign up for that pilot. Um, really, it went to a lot of um, really much, much higher need uh, districts, many urban, some suburban did jump in, I, I don't know why. So we didn't, we didn't sign on to that initial um, kind of wave of testing. So I, I don't really know. Um, I'm not sure if the state's going to expand it. I think if they do expand it and it's something that we can jump on, you know, at no cost, we will. Um, but right now, I don't feel like that's something we, that, that is, that is a make or break for us. Uh, but it's a really good question, and, and we're kind of keeping our, our ear to the ground to see what the state's next move is. So I hope that, I hope that helps answer your question. Jen Mazer.
Hi, thank you. Um, I just wanted to um, make a comment since we are speaking about special education tonight. I'm a parent of three in the district, but I'm also the co-chairperson of the Duxbury Special Education Parent Advisory Council. Um, I know many on the phone may not know, but you know, CPAC officers serve as volunteers. Um, you know, however, our role parallels the role of the school committee member. And our purpose is to serve as an advisory council of the school committee on the needs of special education services within the public school. And these duties include advising the school committee on matters that pertain to education and the safety of our students with disabilities, meeting regularly with school officials to participate in the planning, development, and the evaluation of the school committee's special education programs. And I just wanted to note that um, it seemed that our CPAC was left off tonight's agenda in the discussion, maybe perhaps in the PowerPoints, but you know, we are hearing from parents and we're having support meetings for these parents, because this year more than ever is very unprecedented in terms of what's occurring in the special education realm. Um, so I was a little disheartened just that our council was not mentioned as a means of support for all these parents, as we have been trying very hard to be um, a system for our parents to lean on. And just this week, you know, we've received 10 phone calls and emails from parents looking for support in terms of um, the next step of where they should be in the special education um, process. And in addition, you know, as a CPAC, we sent an email to school committee and administration regarding our population, and I'm was very pleased to hear uh, Dr. Antonucci and, and Peter point out, I'm very hopeful to hear that the committee and the administration will reevaluate and prioritize that population of students um, who perhaps were left out of a high-needs cohort that are currently unable to engage in remote learning. Um, I just wanted to mention then for parents on the phone who may need the support, you can contact us anytime at duckscpacchair@gmail.com on our Facebook page, DucksCPAC, and on our Twitter page. We had a parent support meeting last week that was very well attended and had great turnout, and we have another one coming up this week. So I just wanted to remind the parents on the phone, since this is a special education update, that there is that um, I guess forum for the parents in addition to what is provided by the school. Thank you.
Um, on this parent survey, if I can, um, there is also a link to the CPAC. Um, with the link to the survey about team meetings, there is a link to the CPAC as well. I just wanted to um, let that be known just as another way, but um, thank you, Jen.
Great.
And Jen, thank you for that reminder, and I will say I've been remiss. I did ironically sent you an email in November um, to ask for when your meetings are and if there's a Zoom link that I could get. Um, so I could attend, I'm not a special ed parent, but I am the liaison, so at least um, I think it's your every other month meeting, but um, I, I I am remiss and I have not been on a meeting since we went to remote. I used to attend the meetings in person, so um, if you can email me yours Zoom link, I am happy to attend, unless it's tomorrow night, we have um, a, um, meeting with town finance.
Kelly, that's it.
Okay, sorry, I muted myself before I said, okay. Um, can I, do we, we have no other action items, um, so can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, Julia?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Kelly, aye. Shannon, was that Mathia saying aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you, meeting adjourned, good night, everyone.
Hi.